Hello?
Counselor Ramsey?
Speaking, yes.
Yes, there we go. Counselor Beck said he would be late.
Okay.
Five forty-five, I think he said to us.
So can you hear me clear?
Yes, we can. Thank you.
Thank you.
Cindy? Yeah. Tracy should have sent it out. Go through Tracy. And there's, yeah, there's no electronic copy of the, yeah, yeah. So, I'm gonna... C A O Eleanor, have you heard from Counselor Twill or Counselor Duran if they're gonna be here?
Thank you, your worship. No. We've only heard from Counselor Beck saying he will be here at about five forty-five.
He's at a, a, an event that was already scheduled, so he'll be arriving late. Okay, I, first, we acknowledge, we acknowledge that the land on which we gather is the traditional unceded territory of the Mi'kmaq First Nation. So-called order, don't wanna say that last night I did attend the open house out at Hillsborough Park for the new, uh, uh, mental health and acute care campus uh, that will replace the Hillsborough Hospital and add other facilities and operations to that campus. And there was thirty to forty residents that showed up, but great plan, it's online, so good to see that they're moving forward. Any declarations of conflict of interest? Deputy Mayor, where are you at? Number four, A, B, C, or D?
Um, it would be B, the grant endorsement for the Guild as well as the grant endorsement for the Island Festival. I just, um, just a year ago left my position at the Guild as CEO and also when it came to the Island Theater Festival, that festival was presented at the Guild for seven years, so I just feel that I'm in conflict for both of those.
Okay, duly recognized. Any other? Okay, so approval of the agenda, we have four A, Remuneration Allowance Commission with Ken Durash, Lori, uh, Lori Pendleton and Brian, Brian Houli, and they'll present their report first as four A, four B, economic tourism, two resolutions. I believe they're coming from economic development, tourism and events, festival and events. Then we have a finance audit tendering, uh, resolution for regarding procurement policy in regards to authorizations. And two second readings to establish the S T R, Short Term Rental Licensing Bylaw, and to amend, the second to amend the Zoning Development Bylaw regarding two forty-seven, two fifty-one, Mount Edward Road. I need someone to move that agenda. Move by Counselor McKinnon, second by Counselor Ramsey, yes?
Yes.
Okay, all those in favor? Uh, Counselor Ramsey, no problem?
No problem, I'm in favor, your worship.
Okay, so, Mr. Durash, or Monsieur Durash and Houli and Madame Pendleton, who wish to, wishes to start? Okay.
Mayor and Counselor?
Just turn on your mic there. Is that better?
There we go, Mr. Mayor and Counsel. First, I'd like to take the opportunity to thank the Mayor and Counsel for the confidence in us to compile and produce this report. I think at first glance, none of us realized the undertaking it would entail. Uh, I must also thank Cindy McMillan for her assistance. She helped tremendously with our research and finding information, setting up meetings between ourselves and all the relevant stakeholders. Uh, Ken Durash, our commission's official timekeeper, estimates we have in excess of one hundred and fifty hours into the report. Uh, I must say, during our interviews with Counsel, the deputy mayor and mayor amongst other key stakeholders, we developed amongst ourselves a much greater appreciation of the work and time commitment of the mayor and the individual counselors. In recent years, the size of the city has grown exponentially, as has its diversity, while at the same time with the advent of social media and dealing with all that comes with it, a hopefully once-in-a-century pandemic, a housing crisis amongst the normal daily duties of elected officials. The time demand and constraints and expectations of constituents is not an easy form of public service, and there are many challenges, new and old, which affect elected officials and are expected or perceived to be expected to be fulfilled. As you will see in our report and its subsequent recommendations, we took a broad view to our mandate based both on the precedent of the previous commission and their recommendations, and more importantly, the feedback we received from the Counsel itself, our interviews with the counselors themselves and the mayor and deputy mayor. Uh, our report is about more than just strictly remuneration. It's also about the time commitment and responsibilities involved in public service at the municipal level. It is considerable and can be all-encompassing for many. It's about providing assistance and the supports needed so that members of Counsel can do their job effectively and efficiently and maintain a healthy work-life balance. So without further ado, I'll lead into our recommendations. I will give a brief overview of the first two, and then Lori will take over and discuss the next four, and Ken will close off the recommendations and have some closing remarks and comments. All of our recommendations are discussed, costed, and rationalized in greater detail as you go through the report. And in the appendices, you'll find all of the facts, figures, comparisons, statistics that we use to come to our conclusions. I do hope you all review the report in its entirety, and we will make ourselves available to come back and respond to any questions or concerns that you have. So with that, I'll lead into our recommendations. Firstly, with regards to salary, we recommend that the salary of the mayor, deputy mayor, and members of Counsel remain at the current level and be increased annually on January first by the lowest percentage granted to any of the city's bargaining units in the year, adjusted for C P I. Elected officials, in addition, would be eligible to receive a lump sum payment consistent with that negotiated in the City of Charlottetown collective agreement with UPSI. This indexing would continue until the convening of the next Remuneration and Allowances Commission. Second, under benefits, there are six parts. Uh, A, mileage reimbursement. We recommend that the current reimbursement of mileage traveled by usage of member of Counsel vehicles continue at the same rates as the provincial government employees. No mileage shall be paid for attendance at Counsel meetings, Counsel Committee meetings, or other meetings held within the city of Charlottetown. Uh, B, medical and dental, the current benefits should remain unchanged. Members of Counsel are eligible and can elect for enrollment in the city's medical and dental plan at contribution rates similar to city employees. On retirement, these benefits can be maintained with the retired counselors contributing a hundred percent of premium cost. C, retirement benefits and severance, the current benefit remains unchanged. That is our recommendation. Members of Counsel are eligible for enrollment in the City of Charlottetown's group Registered Retirement Savings Plan or the tax-free savings account at a contribution rate of twelve point two-five percent of their regular monthly earnings. Members of Counsel who cease to hold office shall receive severance renumeration equal to two weeks of their salary for each year of service to a maximum of twenty-six weeks. D, per diems. We recommend that the basic per diems as currently calculated for out-of-providence travel should remain in place at a hundred and fifty dollars with no meal allowances or on per diem for attendance at meetings held within the City of Charlottetown. E, uh, which is a recommendation that we've added that there's not currently a provision for. We recommend that a professional development allowance be made available to upgrade counselor's skills and education to allow for city documents to be delivered electronically to counselors and to address other areas where training or courses may be beneficial. Any allowance would be required to be approved in advance by Counsel and be limited to a dollar amount in specific areas. F, communication and technology allowance, the city continue, we recommend that the city continue to offer communication devices or an allowance in lieu of to ensure the efficient flow of information between elected members, city officials, and constituents of Charlottetown. I'll now pass things along to Lori, who will continue on.
The balance of the recommendations deal with things other than strictly remuneration and benefits. Recommendation number three, in view of the current environment and the city's objective to safeguard its citizens and resources, the commission is recommending that prospective city elected officials be required to submit as part of their nomination process a criminal background and vulnerability check, and B, a credit check. These documents would be submitted to Election P E I or other electoral monitoring group selected to manage the election process and ensure the eligibility of, of a candidate for election. Our rationale with that is best practices with most companies, volunteer organizations. Public offices suggest that screening prior, prior to job placement, screening not unlike job references, provides insight as to the suitability for, for a position of interest. It can also avoid embarrassment potentially to the city and provides for transparency for elected officials. Recommendation number four, onboarding and train, and counselors' training. To better prepare elected officials, the commission is recommending an expansion of the orientation process for counselors, including a mock, mock council meeting similar to the process for M L As, social media, media training, and enhanced orientation binder. The rationale behind that is that in our interviews with the current Counsel, Mayor, and Deputy Mayor, the, the topic of orientation came up frequently. Many new counselors felt that the current onboarding training for new members was not in-depth or adequate, leaving them uncomfortable initially, namely around media and the required preparation for council meetings. Most new counselors do not have prior public elected experience, hence were not ready for the level of scrutiny and questions in a public format from both the media and the general public. The use of training in media relations, in addition to more in-depth training on policies and procedures of council, would be appropriate. Recommendation number five, counselors, mayor, and deputy mayor job profiles descriptions, including expected time commitments. The commission is recommending the development of job profiles descriptions for elected officials, which provides a clear understanding of the specifics of counselors' duties and time commitments. Most counselors, in taking on their newly-elected positions, were surprised at the significant amount of time required by the new position. A job profile description outlining the prospective duties, including the number and attendance requirement, full council meetings, committee meetings, and role requirements as chairperson of committees. In addition to this, other duties, including representing ward interests and bringing community information forward. A discussion of elected officials' role in governance and the responsibility of city departments and personnel should also be included. Recommendation number six, public, public education of the role of city representatives. The commission is recommending the development of a tab on the city's website as a way for the public to secure a clear understanding of the role of the mayor, deputy, and counselors. As noted above, or as noted in the previous recommendation, there's some confusion as to the public's perception of the role of city counselors and the role of city employees. It's important to have clear lines of who is responsible for specific duties in order to reduce the amount of time counselors are responding to inquiries that are the responsibility of city departments and staff. I'm gonna pass over the mic for the following, the, the balance of the...
A little competition here. No problem, it's a nice break. The seventh recommendation suggests that the consolidation of some committees to reduce duplication, the number of meetings, and the time commitment of elected officials. It seems clear that this would lead to a more manageable situation, which in turn would increase efficiencies and be less onerous to counselors. The recommendation also suggests that more time would be helpful to counselors in doing their work. The eighth recommendation suggests that the term limit, the term limits for elected officials be considered. The recommendation notes that it is ultimately the decision that will be made, which, in terms of which candidates are supported as elected officials, that belongs solely to the electorate. The ninth recommendation suggests, given significant growth in the population, that a review of the ward boundaries should be undertaken and that to encourage diversity and representation, other operation options could be considered. The tenth recommendation suggests that in the interest of safety and security for elected officials, there should be dedicated space for counselors to meet with constituents, especially on contentious public issues. It should also be noted that the operations of Counsel impact on work-life balance for elected officials. They are also impacted by social media, by the expectation of constituents, and by relationships with the business community and other organizations. These realities require sound judgment and effective strategy. It is necessary that they be understood by candidates for election and by those elected to office, and that staff are supportive in assisting when challenges arise. All elected officials must respect the reality that citizens have a right to approach them with questions or concerns and a right to a response that indicates how the matter is being handled or to an explanation when the matter cannot be dealt with in the civic framework. Finally, it is important that the city corporation foster positive, inclusive relationships with the business community and with other organizations that contribute to making Charlottetown a vibrant community. We thank you for the opportunity you have provided us to contribute to the future operations at City Hall. We trust that our research will be helpful, and we wish you all the best in the important work of managing the operations at City Hall.
Brian, do you wanna conclude?
Ken just wrapped her up pretty good there. Uh, the rationale, if you, if you wanna, if you wanna look, um, into the report from pages, uh, seven on, each of the recommendations, we provide the rationale behind. So we just kind of gave you an overview of what our recommendations were. And as you get into, uh, I'll take it on the screen here. Uh, page, I think it's seven, yeah, seven, from seven four until you get to the appendices gives you the rationale, the facts, the figures, everything that we considered in, in making these recommendations. And then, um, the numbers that we used are referenced at the, at the back of the report and the appendices, as well as a list of everybody that we, we interviewed and talked to. So what I would suggest, I think perhaps, is, uh, to give Counsel time to, all counselors time to review the report, and then if there's any questions or follow-up from that, you can, um, call on us.
Well, I think there'll be questions today.
Oh, you wanna call a question today?
There'll be questions tonight, oh, yeah. I'm sure there will be, just for clarification, if you wish to ask them. But Brian Houli, Mr. Durash, Ken Durash, Mr. Houli, and Ms. Lori Pendleton, thank you very kindly. For your information, Mr. Durash is a past Counselor of City Hall. Uh, the years I cannot remember, seventy, eighty?
Long time ago.
Yeah, and back then it was three, there were three-year terms. Could I just start off with a question in, on just page seven? That is the salary of elected officials. And I may ask the C A O, Eleanor Mohammed, do we vote on that? Or is that a recommendation that automatically goes through if we receive or accept the report? Can I just ask the C A O, and if you, Brian, Ken, or Lori, if you wanna respond? That's, that's my first question about the report. C A O Eleanor?
Thank you, your worship. In terms of process, what we did is prepare two resolutions for you tonight, either or, depending on what you wanted to do. One would be to receive this report as information and give Counsel more time to think about it and see if they wanna include different aspects in the bylaw and whether they agree with it or not. The other one would be to adopt everything on the spot. So it doesn't sound like we're in "adopt everything on the spot." So the resolution could be, um, that it's received as information tonight, which I could read that for you when you're ready.
Yeah, so that was my question, and, but on that, C A O, again, I know with the provincial government, when the commission of remuneration and indemnities forward their report to the Legislative Assembly, it's automatically adopted, there's no vote on it. Is that the same for this issue? So we just accept it and look at what is proposed in the table on page seven?
Thank you, thank you.
I'm just trying to get a gauge of where we go with it.
Thank you, your worship. So the next step after this would be, there's a remuneration bylaw. So we have to update the bylaw and bring that through Counsel for approval.
Are you aware of that, Brian, Ken?
My, my suggestion, from my background in government...
Ken, can you just use the mic because we, sorry about that?
No problem. My suggestion, from my background in government and all of that, is, is you simply accept that you have the report uh, and that you're going to take some time, deal with it, consider the implications, hear from staff, all of the rest of that stuff. Uh, and out of that will arise specific things that you wanna do in order to implement it. But I, I think you need to get your, your heads inside of it. Uh, your staff need to give you advice about the implications of the recommendations. Uh, so, uh, and then you'll be in a position to say, yes, we think we should do that. Or you might also say, those characters are crazy, we shouldn't do this, you know, whatever works out of the process. But I would be very surprised if you said you wanted to do everything we recommended tonight.
Yeah, no, no, we have to receive the report for sure.
Yeah.
Okay, I, I just wanna, Brian?
Yeah, our, our understanding was that it was gonna be received as information, and then if you had, uh, uh, because it's, there's too much information, you know, it's a fifty or sixty-page report. You're not going to read it all in the next ten minutes and then develop reasonable questions from it. So we, we assume that we would present it to you, give you kind of a summary of it, an executive summary overview of it, and then you could take some time to review it, and then, uh, you know, at that point, if you had questions or changes, et cetera, et cetera, you could, uh, call us, call back on us at any time.
Any questions? Clarifications?
I have one, your worship.
Uh, Counselor Kevin Ramsey?
Yes, your worship, I, is there a paper copy that everyone received tonight since I'm away?
Yes, and we did not send out, there's no digital copy, but you'll receive that tomorrow.
Okay, thank you very much.
Uh, well Cindy has a, you have flash drive now, so we do have a digital, Cindy does have a digital copy of it now. So you can email it to Kevin whenever you want.
I mean, I can get it to, as a paper copy too, because I'm still in school where I sort of like to have the paper in my hand and read it, take your...
Counselor Beck is looking at everything going digital. Counselor Beck, do you have a question? I think we're all right with it, to receive it. Counselor Bernard?
Yeah, no, no, um, I, I think that we can receive it. There's a lot, as, as Brian says, there's a lot of information here to digest. I will just make comment, though, I believe number nine, the review of the ward system and electrical boundaries, happens every three years. Yeah, that does happen now, so, yeah.
Uh, wait, I think it happens every two terms or after every, yeah, after. Yeah, I think the problem is after every third election.
Used to be, yeah.
But I think what he's, in the report, they're suggesting looking at an open ward system, a hybrid, or continuing what, what we're doing now.
The system has detected that a few lines are still connected to the conference and will attempt to disconnect them. If you wish to remain in the conference, please press star one fifteen...
State town, Deputy Mayor.
Welcome to 1988.
Another question, Councillor Bernard, are you just, okay. Councillor Matar, no questions, you're all right, you're ready to receive it and go home and read it tonight, and come back with questions tomorrow? Go ahead.
I will just say, excuse me, thank you very much for spending all the time doing the report. Appreciate it.
It was a pleasure, it was a pleasure talking to everyone, it was a pleasure dealing with you. And I think, as Brian started up, I personally didn't have any idea of the amount of work that went into being a councillor, and it, I am, I'm so surprised.
The system has detected that a few lines are still connected to the conference and will attempt to disconnect them. If you wish to remain in the conference, please press star one. Fourteen.
Okay. Okay, are you all right? I just want one last question under three. Does the province of Prince Edward Island for the Legislative Assembly, do they require a security check for any of the candidates that submit their name for election?
I think the parties do initially.
Right.
I know the Liberal Party does, in their background check, I'm not sure about the Conservatives.
I know federally that, federally, but provincially, I don't. For the provincial? Just turn, yeah. Okay. Go ahead.
It's quite a process, there's quite, I think there was like a fifteen-page application, they go into your whole background, financials and everything, when you're applying to be a candidate for a particular party.
Okay, background experience.
Ask your brother.
What's that?
Ask your brother.
Yeah, he'd be able to tell me, he was there for twenty-two years. Okay, well, let's, again...
Your Worship?
Question? Do you have a question, Councillor Ramsey?
I just want to thank the three folks there for taking a lot of time and all that, for doing it, and I'll be interested to read it all, because I know it sort of took them an awful lot of time, so thank you very much for that.
Again, I think that's reflective from all of us, that we appreciate the work, and I know that it went on for, what, a hundred and twenty days? So you did your due diligence in covering all the bases. And again, on behalf of myself, councillor Cindy, the administrator that worked with the committee, the commission, thank you very much. And if we do need any clarification, CAO Eleanor Mohammed, we can bring them back in to provide more information on the rationale. Okay? Okay. Thank you kindly. So do you want to read a resolution?
Thank you, Your Worship. Moved by Deputy Mayor Yatov, seconded by Councillor McKinnon, be it resolved that council accept the report as presented by the members of the Renumeration and Allowance Commission for information purposes, and that the recommendations be reviewed by council with a resolution being presented at a future meeting. And further that, any recommendation council adopts be incorporated into... Did that just die?
Nope.
Incorporated into the remuneration bylaw following the bylaw amendment process.
Question? Okay, all those in favor, please raise your hand. Councillor Ramsey, yea or nay?
I'm in favor, Your Worship.
Eight-zero with councillors Twill and Dron absent. Okay, thank you again, thank you very much.
A lot better than the five or six-page report we got the last time.
Better dollar value.
I can just publicly, it's a thousand dollars per member, and then any expenses incurred by the, by the commission will be budgeted through the Office of the Mayor, or through strategic priorities, communication, intergovernmental cooperation. He's got, he's got that budget there, it's called projects. Okay. But anyways, that's what we paid in two thousand nineteen, too.
Well, my question is, do you have any questions?
Yeah, so, do you want to just repeat your question?
Thank you, Your Worship. No, just curious what the cost was incurred for have this report presented to us.
So the cost from this council, from City Hall, was a thousand dollar per diem, per commissioner? And I think Cindy told me that there was some expenses incurred for the printing up the report, so that'll be expensed against the account. And I believe it falls under special projects, Standing Committee for Strategic Priorities, Communication, Intergovernmental Cooperation. Okay. Anything else? Okay, we do have two resolutions. I know the deputy is in conflict. Kevin, can you stay on?
Yes, I can stay on for a few minutes here.
Okay. Can you just close that door, deputy? So, grant endorsement for the Guild, Councillor MacLeir, this is coming from finance, I know it didn't stay there, do we want to give any background, or do I want to ask the CAO to give the background?
I'll defer to the CAO, but I know what, just before I ask Eleanor to take it, the, I mean, this did start off in the original budget leading process, it did come through, and others who questioned, I think, at our last council meeting, you know, why it came through maybe economic development when it was talked about at the last council meeting, but it did start off originally in economic development, when these people first, both these requests were started. But it ended up in finance, because that's where the grant money was being, being paid out from. Thank you. CAO?
Thank you, Your Worship. Well, I think this is similar to what was before council the other night, we have a recommendation for an additional twenty thousand dollar grant for the Guild. This request is in alignment with our grant policy. Currently, the grant policy does allow multiple requests. After our finance committee meeting just yesterday, it was decided that we would relook at the grants policy to not allow multiple applications. So the applications would happen once, once a year during budget time. So those amendments will be made to the policy. However, these requests have come forward, they're in alignment with the policy, and you have a recommendation here before you, and that's that council endorse a one-time twenty thousand dollar grant for the Guild in this fiscal year.
So, CAO Eleanor, that is the resolution?
Thank you, Your Worship, so I'll read the resolution for you. Moved by Councillor McKinnon, seconded by Councillor MacLeir, be it resolved that council endorse a one-time twenty thousand dollar grant for the Guild, and the funds be allocated from the 2023-2024 operating budget, which includes five hundred thousand dollars for new external grants. And further that, the mayor and CAO are hereby authorized to execute standard contracts and agreements to implement this resolution.
Councillor McKay?
Thank you.
Councillor Ramsey, I'm going to get to after Councillor Matar, so I'm just going through the list here.
Not a problem, sir.
Thank you.
Yeah, no, not a problem.
Thank you, and I'm glad to hear that we will go back and look at, maybe clarifying a little bit in our policy, how we're going to do things, because I understand that we don't have anything there, and this is why it's here now. I guess my question is, when we approved the money that went out in grants, did we miss something, or is there something that, that we didn't get information for? You know, there was a number of organizations that came looking for money, some got their full amount, some didn't get their full amount. I think for me, I'm not comfortable unless there's something we've missed, or there was new information that came to us, to go back and look at two specific applications for more money in this fiscal year. I mean, once they can come back in November and they can, and reapply, there was, like I said, other organizations who, who didn't all get their full ask, some didn't get anything. So to go back and look at two applications that have been given money at this time, I'm not going to be supporting either this application, or this resolution, or the one up and coming.
Thank you. Councillor McKinnon, Councillor Matar, and Councillor Bernard, and Councillor Ramsey.
Thank you, Your Worship, and Councillor McCabe, basically, I echo everything that she said, like, I feel that these two groups that are looking for funding, they're coming in as a second time, and I am also happy to see that this will, this grant process will be looked at. But to know that there's two groups that are coming back for the second kick of the pot for funding, when there was groups that got nothing, and some didn't get everything they asked for, and others got their full allotment, so I won't be supporting this as well. So, but if we, I guess part of the amendments to the new policy, to look at it, if there is money left in the pot after the initial allotments being sent out, can everybody come back in as a second dib? Like, and not just, like, you know, there's two groups here asking if everybody put their pot, hand in the pot, and then be looked at. But like Councillor McCabe said, there's nothing new that I see here for the allotment. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Matar, and Councillor Bernard, and Councillor Ramsey.
Thank you, Your Worship. I guess I don't have much more to add to exactly what both Councillor McKinnon and Councillor McCabe added. I'm under the same, I guess, understanding of the process and the way that it came in, and these two applicants both received money, grants during the process, and looking to come back a second time. You know, I will support the, looking back at the policy around this, and how we would have one application per calendar year or fiscal period, you know, in regard to how much money they receive or don't receive. And if there is money available at the end of the year, I think, you know, that's, goes back into the, you know, the city operational fund or whatever, because we would be opening up, like, you know, in a period of time, like, when that money would need to be allocated back out for things. So I will not support, you know, the resolution going forward this evening based on those principles. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor, Councillor Matar, and Councillor Bernard.
Thank you, Your Worship. Yeah, I think a lot of the same things are being said, I just have a couple of questions. I thought last night, when we were dealing with this, it was around sixty thousand, I'm seeing here there's another twenty-four thousand, grant in lieu of taxes approved and budget, so that's the grant in lieu of taxes. So the amount so far we've given this year is up to eighty thousand dollars. Excuse me. What do we mean when we say a one-time grant? Because we've been granting it every year. So does this mean that they can't come back in the next budget and ask for money? Because I'm seeing here, one-time grant, one-time grant, we go through the years, it was a one-time grant.
I'm going to turn that over to our CAO, and then there's also our manager, but I think our manager of finance doesn't have the corporate history on that, that policy. CAO, do you have any?
Thank you, Your Worship. So I think it's just, what is meant is, this twenty thousand is a one-time within the twenty thousand of this application.
Yeah.
So it's not going to be like twenty thousand, twenty thousand, twenty thousand each consecutive year, it's happening just this year with this application, one time, twenty thousand dollars. Every application is considered as a new application.
Right, so they can come in with another application, that'd be called a one-time, too.
Yeah. Well, I suppose some grants are multiple-year grants, and they wouldn't be considered one-time, I suppose.
Yeah, I agree with my colleagues, I think that when we went through the grant policy, we went through that pretty, pretty efficiently, I guess. And there was some that, I'm not sure if anybody got what they asked, and I think it's the proper process, is to go through the grant system again, when we were going through the grants again, make it fair for everybody. So, thank you.
Councillor Ramsey, can you hear us? Can you speak into your mic?
Yes, I can, Your Worship.
You have the floor.
Very carefully, thank you. And our, my fellow, all my fellow colleagues basically said what I was going to say, and I will not be supporting this, because as Councillor McCabe and a few others said, and we read through it, there's some did not receive any. And at the same time, just because there's, with five hundred thousand dollars there, it does not sort of give people rights to come back and look for a grant. And that's my personal opinion on that, because we can use that five hundred thousand somewhere else, so I will not be in favor of those two resolutions. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Councillor McKinnon, and Councillor Beck.
Thank you, Your Worship. Just for time-wise, there's two resolutions here, I was wondering if we can read off the second one and deal with both together.
We have to, we have to deal with them separately.
They have to separately?
Yeah, so it just requires, as soon as the resolution is read, call the question.
Okay, thank you.
Councillor Beck.
Yeah, I think I'm flying solo in this one, but I'll be, I would be in support of this motion. I think that circumstances change as we go along, especially in the cultural sector, the theater sector, and I think the circumstances change. I do like the idea of, I mean, the Guild has been around for a long time, has provided a longstanding service to the community. I think the last time we reached out for additional support, I think it was 2011, according to the document there. And I guess I'm feeling that there are circumstances that do change over time, and we do try and respond as best we can. I think when we were going back through this original process, when we had the five hundred thousand dollars allocated, it was, there was money that was left aside to address potential future changes which may arise. So that left us with the ability to possibly reallocate money at a later time. And I see this as, I guess, two parts, one, supporting a longstanding contributor to the arts and culture in Charlestown in the Guild, and the other in supporting an up-and-coming theater festival, and to see if we can provide a level of support in helping that become a more permanently established program in Charlestown. So I would be in favor of approving the motion as outlined.
Okay. Councillor Bernard?
Yeah, I just want to add, I think my recollection was when we had the five hundred thousand, it was throughout the year, I mean, after we passed the budget, there's still eleven months, eleven months to go, and I think that was for any ask, that was it like an emergency ask, or an ask that never made on time, that council would reconsider, but not for someone we already gave a grant to, then come back before the year's over and ask for it again. And I mean, you know, if there was a story behind it, if there was an emergency, if there was something that we say, as Councillor McCabe said, if there was new information, something that was, you know, we really need to revisit that, then, yeah, we probably would, but I don't see any new information, really. So, thank you.
Okay.
Questions called.
Questions called. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Councillor Ramsey?
Nay.
Okay. All those against, please raise your hand. So it's six, two, one. Okay?
Seven, one?
Six, because we're missing two inches in. Okay, do you want to read the next resolution, please?
Thank you, Your Worship. Moved by Councillor McKinnon, seconded by Councillor MacLeir, be it resolved that council endorse a twenty thousand dollar grant for the Island Theater Festival in the current fiscal, with consideration of funding for two subsequent being considered separately as part of the 2024-2025 and 2025-2026 budget processes, and that this year's funding be allocated from the 2023-2024 operating budget, which includes five hundred thousand for new external grants, and further that the mayor and CAO are hereby authorized to execute standard contracts and agreements to implement this resolution.
Questions called. Councillor Matar, did you want to say something quickly?
Go ahead, sir.
Thank you, I just want to, I guess I just want to add to my further comment, you know, in looking at these, for me personally, I just want to make it clear... clear, you know, I'm certainly supportive of the cultural festival communities and, 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 and all those who came forward with applications. I, my decisions tonight are more based on principle and, and making sure that things are fair for those who, you know, asked for, um, grants that were, uh, you know, reduced based on their ask, or, or not received any at all. And I think, you know, just by looking back at the policy, maybe that's where we, you know, we need to, uh, look back at that as where we have, where we fell down on in the sense of being very clear that your asks when they come in are, are on an annual basis. Um, so again, I just, for me personally, it's not, it's not about, uh, the applicant or other applicants. I, I certainly, uh, think these are great organizations and, and love to help out where we could, but unfortunately, I think just based on principle of the, the process is, is my decision, and unfortunately, won't be able to support this one as well. Thank you.
Questions called? Okay. All those in favor of the resolution, please raise your hand. Okay. All those opposed? Okay, Counselor-
I oppose, I oppose, your worship.
Counselor McKinnon, Counselor Mert, Counselor McElair, Counselor Bernard, and Counselor Ramsey, opposed. Six to one. Go ahead, sir.
So, why is it tonight now, when, when we oppose these, that we're not doing another resolution?
Good point.
Because we brought that up before, and I, and to me, it was ridiculous. Like, once you said no, this, this, this falls, but the other night, you're saying, no, no, we gotta do another resolution now.
To reject it.
Yeah.
Good, good point. So we have to have-
I'm not sure, we never used to be, have to do that. This was rejected.
No, but, but that is a good point.
So, anyway.
Just one sec. Counselor Beck?
Yeah, I would agree, because we are rejecting professional-
I agree.
Professional staff is recommending this, correct? Kind of what we had when we did the other night.
Exactly. No, I missed that, so I believe that we should ask the C A O and get her opinion.
Thank you, worship. Um, that was a, a planning function the other night, uh, where it ends up having to go through the Island Regulatory and Appeals Commission, so that's why that extra step is, is needed.
Just want to clarify.
This is a separate one where council has not agreed, and that's okay. Thank you.
So, just again, clarification, if it was a planning resolution, we would have to, uh, submit another resolution to reject the recommendation, correct? Counselor, um, C A O, Eleanor Mohammed, you'd only be co-counsel, do you?
Uh, thank you, worship, and yes, that was on, uh, the advice of legal, that that rejection piece was added in there. Thank you.
Can we get, uh, the deputy, bring her back in? Counselor Beck? Can I just finish this up, please?
And, we're absent, just one second.
And D M Yankov in conflict. Thank you. Thank you. So, um, Counselor McElair, are you ready to take this one on? This finance audit tender and its procurement, procurement policy in regards to authorizations? Do you want to give a little background, or do you want to?
Yeah, um, thank you, uh, Mayor Brown. Um, yeah, just, um, uh, before I hand off to Betty, uh, Manager Betty French on the, uh, on procurement policy, uh, there's been a lot of, a lot of work, a lot of work done by Betty and her staff, uh, on this. Um, we had a, a very good, uh, pass-through at our, at our finance committee meeting yesterday, uh, and, um, it's, uh, it's, it's here this evening for, uh, again, um, for your, for your information, and, uh, and would, uh, ask Betty to, I'm gonna take it from there. Thank you.
Okay. Our manager of finance, the esteemed Betty French, you're on.
Thank you, your worship, and, uh, through to council and back to McElair, just to clarify, this is not to do with the new procurement bylaw. This is the clarification that we were asking for on the existing procurement policy. So just to, um, refresh what it is that we're looking for, the common practice under the current procurement policy is any purchases greater than $25,000 come to council for approval, less than that, they're approved within the departments. However, with some new folks looking at that policy, it isn't completely clear what the intention is. It doesn't specifically say in that policy at what point council has to approve them. It kind of alludes to it in a particular paragraph, it talks about council approving tenders, but it doesn't give any dollar value. So, while we wait for the new procurement bylaw to be in place, so that we all know we're doing what we're supposed to be doing, and there's no questions later, we would appreciate getting clarification. So what this, um, resolution is looking for is to confirm that only items greater than $25,000 come to council.
Okay. Counselor Bernard, and Counselor Mert. Counselor Bernard, first.
Okay, no, I think, uh, I think Betty answered it, um, because this is the same policy that I always thought was in place, uh, they can do R F P right up to 25,000, and it went to tender after 25,000. Um, I don't think it had to come to council before, it was under 25. So I just wondered why there was a resolution, uh, because that's the policy that's in place now, but I think she answered it, so.
We, we do have an answer from, from the C A O, or, or Betty, one or the other.
And I always thought, the last thing, I thought it was, uh, the low-dollar procurement. I thought it was from five to 25 for the invitation of competition, but it's four to 25, is it? Okay.
Okay. C A O, do you want to?
Thank you, worship. So, um, as Ms. French had, had already said, we're, we're just looking to confirm what the existing practice is, because the policy is vague. So, we're looking for council to confirm, um, what the expectations are of council, so we don't get lost in the vague policy. So, this is, uh, a stopgap for us until we get a more fulsome bylaw in place that is very explicit about what we bring and what we don't bring before council. Thank you.
Counselor Mert?
Thank you, worship. Uh, just for clarification purposes, um, one, I'm very happy to see this guideline, um, explicitly developed now. We've seen a few situations that have come to, at the committee level. Uh, so, does this mean we'll, like, although it says here the department has the ability to authorize and approve, does it still come to the committee level for discussion and approval, or it does not, is what I'm, no? So, will the discussion of that item still be at the committee level, like, regardless of the, not seeking approval, but still knowing that the procurement of a particular item will occur, uh, in that area? I'll just say, you know, wood chipper we want to buy for $18,000 in Public Works, will that come to the Public Works Committee to have that discussion, um, as, as a discussion point, obviously not as approval, but, thank you.
C A O Mohammed?
Thank you, worship. So, that, the time when council would see these items is in the budget process, so you would get the listing, and that's when you would sign off on all of this. Um, and then after that, it would be the, the general business of the departments to be able to, um, execute all these different items. You might see, depending on, um, if it involves a policy or a program or governance, you might see, um, information about that coming forward to council, that a project's moving along, or details like that, but not necessarily, um, the listing of, we purchased this, this piece of equipment this month, or, you know, other details like that. Thank you.
Yeah, just to follow up, I go to the chair, I, I assume, I don't know if this is going to Counselor McElair, but, uh, I apologize for not following the protocol.
That's all right.
Um, so, for non-budgeted items, though, that are under 25,000, will that still need to come to council for approval?
Non-budgeted.
Uh, to the chair.
Do you, Counselor McElair, do you want to forward that on to Betty, or C A O yourself?
Well, I'll take, I'll take a stab at it. I think on your $18,000 wood chipper example, I think, like, for under 25,000, and in that example, like, the $18,000 wood chipper, or whatever it may be, there'll be at least three bid, a three big, three bid piece, uh, required on that, like, yeah. And Betty, I don't know if you have anything more to add to that?
Just use your mic.
Sorry, just to reiterate my question, my question was, for non-budgeted items over 25,000, do they still come to committee and/or council for approval? Um, because this one, you indicated, C A O, that this was for budgeted items, whether it be capital or, um, operational, so my question is for non-budgeted items, for things that come about. Uh, we've seen it, and I, I'd like to know of how that's in, and then, thank you.
See, C A O Mohammed, i-if you look at the, on page, uh, I'm on the document, it doesn't have my page, because I'm on the web, 4,000 to 25,000, so there has to be an invitational competition, three quotes. I, I believe those three quotes, quotes always went back to the committee. Did they not? Okay. No? Okay. Go ahead there, Counselor Bernard.
I think my experience has been that, that it's, it's an operational issue, if it's a non-budgeted item, then it definitely comes back, because it's non-budget, so they have to get the money somewhere, so they have to get permission to get the money. Anything over 25,000 was always tendered out, um, but under 25,000, they would get requests for proposals, they would, or they would get three, three, uh, yeah, three bids. Um, but, you know, something that's $3,500 or $4,500, and it's in, and you've already passed the, the capital budget, and they have the items that they gotta purchase, it doesn't need to come back again, it's already been approved. For non-budgeted items, yeah, that would come back to the committee, and I would assume that if it's under the 25,000, then it comes back to committee, and they, it's another line, they definitely gotta move money from one line out into another, and then the committee would have to approve that, unless it's under the $10,000. But, for the most part, my thinking is, it's, it's, it's an operational issue, um, and the money's been budgeted, so they go out and they, they follow the procurement policy, and then however that falls, it falls. So they do their R F Q, or they do their three call, three, three bids, or, or goes to tender.
Okay.
Okay, just, Counselor McCabe, and then, then I'll come back to you.
Thank you, and, and I did leave the finance meeting earlier yesterday, but I did watch it last night to catch the end of it, and there's more work coming that's going to probably more, better clarify some of those questions. It was just, I think, this particular part was that, for budgets already approved for now, to keep business going, but there will be, um, some more work coming through our committee, where we're gonna move that to council, if that's correct, Chair, and, uh, Manager Betty, with more information on some of those specific questions on amounts. Am I correct?
Can I just, yeah, just, just one sec?
Okay.
Okay. Betty, do you want to weigh in?
Thank you, your worship. Yes, I am pleased to report the, uh, the new procurement policy will specifically address unbudgeted items. The current polit, the current, yes, policy does not refer to unbudgeted items. So we haven't sought clarification on that at the moment, but it will certainly be addressed in the new bylaw.
Procurement bylaw. Just, yeah, can you just hit your mic?
So is anybody interested in statistics? I looked this up this afternoon, and the number of purchase orders for purchases between 4,000 and 25,000, which is kind of the range we're talking about right now, over the last three months has been 118. So if we had 118 extra resolutions coming to council, it, it sounds like a lot. The number that are between 25 and 100,000 are 25, the number between 100, over 100,000 is, is 30. So it, it is interesting to know that of the 173 P O's over $4,000, 68% of them are under the $25,000 threshold, so it just would be a lot more coming here. But I, I do agree with your comment about unbudgeted, but that, that particular item wasn't addressed at all in the current policy.
Yeah, just go on there, sir.
It, it was really just a clarification.
No, no, it's good.
I think it comes back to just that accountability component that-
Transparency.
We ensure that if we are having unbudgeted items, that we have expenses towards, that we are being, uh, accountable to how that is being spent, whether it's at the committee level, the operational level, or the, at the council level. So it's, it's great to see, and if it's not there now, and or it's not blatantly obvious, it's going to be soon enough, and we'll, we'll work through that, so it, it's just a, um, an observation on my part. So thank you very much.
And, and our C A O noted, and if you look at the document, the first sentence, since the B D O report was received, policies are receiving a higher level of scrutiny to ensure they are being followed appropriately. Counselor Bernard?
No, I, I'm just trying to understand, um, how do we purchase an unbudgeted item if it's unbudgeted and the money hasn't been approved? How do we go about approving or purchasing an unbudgeted item, when it's very specific in their bylaws that you can't purchase anything unless it's been approved by council in the budget? So I'm, I'm kind of trying to figure out, what, what do you mean, unbudgeted item? Where are you getting an unbudgeted item? Like, how does council, how does anybody go out and purchase something that hasn't been budgeted? I'm not understanding that question.
So, if you look at the $4,000, low-dollar procurement, I know they're making purchases that are not in the budget, right? You know that, because Public Works is going out and buying maybe a piece of equipment.
But that piece of equipment would have been approved in the capital budget.
Oh, under 4,000? Do you think it goes down that specific? I, I don't think so.
No, but they would have a budget to purchase small items. I mean, they're not gonna list paper and photocopies and everything, that's, that's part of-
But they wouldn't list, they wouldn't list those items.
No, they wouldn't list them, they have a budget for it.
Yeah. So if, if you're talking about a miscellaneous, a line item, a lot of stuff can follow along with that, too.
Yeah, yeah, but that's not an unbudgeted item. Like, I'm trying to figure, what's an unbudgeted item? Are you buying a tractor, are we buying a truck, are we saying it's not budgeted? Like, what do we talk about? Because everything's budgeted, or you wouldn't be buying it. Now, that's what, I'm kind of perplexed what we're down with an unbudgeted item. I don't know.
So, thank you, Counselor Bernard. Obviously, that's my question. Um, so I, to clarify, and, you know, you certainly have more historical context here, but I would have to assume, and my experiences tell me, that things, uh, can happen and will happen that require, uh, a purchase outside of something that is budgeted. It, because it doesn't happen, or it shouldn't have, doesn't mean it won't happen, and I'm only asking the question, in the event, so maybe I'll reword it, in the event of an unbudgeted, uh, procurement, we need to have this in place, so, and if it doesn't happen, then that's great. Uh, that means that we are doing the right things by, uh, budgeting, during our budgeting process to ensure that our capital assets and are budgeted, and our operational components are budgeted, and we shouldn't be spending outside of that. That's a great thing. But I have to assume there will be a time, if there already hasn't been, where a decision will be made on a particular, uh, procurement, for whatever reason, that we may have to do that from an unbudgeted perspective. Where the money comes from, you know, internally shifting around, that's one thing, and I guess maybe that's all in the same to you, but to me, it doesn't, that's not what I was envisioning that, so I hope that helps to clarify what I mean by an unbudgeted item.
Just, just, Counselor Bernard? Yeah. Just, Deputy Mayor, I just want to go, and then you can go next. Deputy?
Um, thank you. And it's my understanding, I mean, I've seen it many times, I think, that I've heard in committee meetings, a manager will come with the, um, with a proposed resolution for the committee to move on to council, and it might say, um, it was, it, the quote commit higher than they thought, so they're gonna need additional permission for the additional money, and that always comes back to council. Anything additional, so anything unbudgeted always comes back to council, is my understanding.
And that's why the manager has to sign off on them, and so if it's over, it's his responsibility to let committee know.
Okay.
Anyway.
So, C A O Mohammed, or Manager Betty French, does that clarify it for you, or does it?
Thank you, worship. So to clarify-
Scratch your head.
In budget, some of the areas in our budget, um, oh, what could I think? In, in the city government part of the budget, there's a, a line that says reports. It's not specific about what kind of reports, but it's a budgeted item, that if I need some sort of supplementary report, I have budget for it. Um, here's an example of unbudgeted. We did a restructuring, and we had to find money, uh, for an individual who wasn't part of the budget. That ended up coming through the appropriate committees to say, we're moving money around to accomplish this. Another, um, thing that we've added to all of our council reports, for more transparency, is that financial implication part of your report. So either they're saying in there that it's budgeted, and here's the budget it's coming from, or- it's coming from, or we're looking to move money, and this is what that's about. So that's what that extra level will be. The great news is, though, that the new procurement bylaw is so clear and explicit about unbudgeted and budgeted, and what's going where, and who gets to see what, that I think it will be a relief to all of us once it's through. Thank you.
So this is a holdover, correct, Betty, between the procurement policy and the new procurement bylaw that we've been waiting for four or five years? So it's coming down the tubes. Is that correct? Yeah.
That is correct, thank you.
But it'll clarify the process. Make it open, transparent, and accountable. O-T-A. O-T-A. Okay, do we have a resolution? Now, did you read it? No, not yet.
Thank you, Worship.
I know you're trying to move things quickly here, Counsel Bernard. No. This is just to clarify. This is just to clarify. Yeah. I think this is just to satisfy what was in the report about what BDO was stating about our system, and this is just a vote of endorsement of what we're doing, correct? We, it's...
The policy implies things, but it's not explicit about things. And what we're looking for here is to be explicit.
Well said there, CAO. That's why we hired you.
Thank you, Worship.
Kevin's gone? He didn't tell you?
I'm just leaving now, Your Worship.
No, just hold on, hold on.
Moved by Counselor McLeir, seconded by Counselor McCabe. Be it resolved that as per the procurement policy, departments may approve procurements less than 25,000 Canadian before taxes, and that council approval is required for all procurements over 25,000 before taxes.
Question. All in favor? Counselor McLeir? Counsel Ramsey? That Counselor McLeir lives in Ottawa. Okay, eight-zero. Okay, so we have Counsel Beck, who is in conflict, and that's the only person, so he has to step out. Could you come back? I thought you said it the other night, but just like the Deputy Mayor gave her conflict, I appreciate that, so it's on the public record. Counselor Beck, could you please state your conflict of interest on this issue?
So I'm in conflict because a family member, I've been deemed to be in conflict because a family member is involved in the short-term rental business. That was a determination that was made back six, eight months ago.
When you first arrived on scene.
Yep.
Did you get legal counsel, or is that...
That was a legal opinion.
Yes, and I think you did the same thing, Deputy Mayor, on the other two issues. So it was clarified.
And so I didn't know for sure whether I was, so I sought a legal opinion, and the legal opinion came back that I was in conflict, so.
And I believe CAO Mohammed, that was the same with Counsel Twill? No, 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 it's a good point. Yeah. Just go ahead.
It makes me wonder, am I in conflict? Because I have a child who has a number of Airbnbs, not P.I. No doubts.
It has to be here.
Okay.
Yeah. Counsel, thank you, Counsel Beck. You want to have a bite to eat? No, the family told me. Okay. Could we get a reading? Second reading.
Thank you, Worship. To adopt bylaw PH SDR-2, to adopt a new short-term rental licensing bylaw for the City of Charlottetown administering, for administering licenses pertaining to tourist homes. Be it resolved that the bylaw to establish the City of Charlottetown Short-Term Rental Licensing Bylaw, as attached, was read a first time and approved on October 10th, 2023. Whereas the bylaw to establish the City of Charlottetown Short-Term Rental Licensing Bylaw, PH SDR-2, as attached, was, oh, got that already, be it resolved, my apologies, the said bylaw be read a second time and approved. Moved by Deputy Mary Yankoff, seconded by Counselor McCabe.
Shella Carey. Counsel Ramsey? He's gone. Okay, okay. Again, please.
Be it resolved that said bylaw be adopted, moved by Deputy Mary Yankoff, seconded by Counselor McCabe.
Shella Carey? Pass. Okay. So I just need the counselors that are not here. So counselors, just one second. Duran and Twill. Counselor Beck. In conflict. And Counsel Ramsey left the room. Okay, can we read the second resolution, or look at it? Amendment to the zoning and development bylaw, please. Thank you.
Okay. Zoning and Development Bylaw, PH ZD-2, to adopt bylaw PH ZD-2-72, a bylaw to amend the zoning and development bylaw, to amend Appendix G zoning map of the zoning and development bylaw for the easterly portion of 247, 251 Mount Edward Road, Pids 390625 and 390633, from the low residential density, or low-density residential R2S zone to comprehensive development area CDA zone. And Appendix B, comprehensive development area CDA parcels and permitted uses for 247, 251 Mount Edward Road, Pids 390625 and 390633, to permit a two-phase residential development, including Phase One, 16-stacked townhouses, dwellings, 32 units, and three apartment dwellings, 42 units, on 5.25 acres of land. In Phase Two, three apartment dwellings, 175 units, two stacked townhomes, four units. Whereas the bylaw to amend the City of Charlottetown Zoning and Development Bylaw, PH ZD-2-72, as it pertains to 247, 251 Mount Edward Road, Pids 390625 and 390633, as attached, was read and approved a first time on October 20th, October 10th, 2023. Be it resolved that the said bylaw be read a second time and approved. Moved by Deputy Mary Yankoff, seconded by Counselor McCabe.
Shella Carey? Pass.
Be it resolved that the said bylaw be adopted, moved by Deputy Mary Yankoff, and seconded by Counselor McCabe.
Shella, pass. Pass. Okay. Okay. Okay, that's it. Motion adjourned, Counsel McCabe. Deputy Mary Yankoff, you sure? Positive? Okay, all those in favor? Thank you very much.